Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get going. Are you recording? Okay, thank you. Good evening. It's May 19th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. Chapter two of the Acts of 2025 extended, extend through June 30th, 2027, the ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present in the meeting location. This meeting, however, is accessible by Zoom, by phone, as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel nine, and through live stream. There are, in fact, eight counselors in the town room tonight. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only in the event of technology issues with the remote connection. The meeting will continue in person as scheduled, such that members of the public are encouraged to attend the meeting at its physical location if possible. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the May 19th regular Town Council meeting to order at 6:31. I'll call upon each counselor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic, say "present", and then make sure you mute it again. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothard is absent. Counselor Ette is absent. Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Counselor Lord.
Present.
I think I heard you say "present". Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub is absent. Counselor Walker is not, has not joined us yet. There is no chat room for this meeting. If a counselor has technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment, use the raised hand button. There is no change in the order of the agenda. There are two public comment periods this evening. One is specific to the EverSource hearing. The other is the regular general public comment period. Please note, then in June, we have three meetings. June 2nd, which, at which time, we will also do a public forum on the capital improvement program, proposed capital improvement program. June 16th and June 30th. By June 30th, we have to pass a budget. Various committees are meeting over the next couple of weeks. Community Resources Committee is meeting on May 22nd and June 12th at 3:00. Finance Committee is meeting on May 20th at 1:00 and on May 22nd at 9:00. GOL is meeting on May 27th and June 10th at 6:30. And TSO is meeting on June 5 and 26th at 10:00. I want to mention a few things. First of all, tomorrow, we have the topping off ceremony for the new elementary school building. That will be at 4 o'clock. There's a Memorial Day commemoration, which will include a parade and meeting also at War Memorial Pool. The parade will be at 9:00. The War Memorial Pool event is around 10 o'clock. There's a pride flag raising that will be on June 2nd at 5:30, right before the Town Council meeting on the North Common. And Race Amity Day and Youth Hero Awards, Sunday, June 8th, on Mill River Recreation Area at 11:00. And then a pride parade on June 22nd at noon. Excuse me. With that, we're going to move to the hearing. It's an EverSource petition. It is to install one solely owned underground duck bank at 70 Southeast Street. I'm going to ask Guilford Maureen, who is with us, to provide a brief overview. And then we will ask, go through the following and have questions from counselors, ask if their public has any questions and want to speak in favor or in opposition, and then questions from the council. Guilford.
Good evening. EverSource has been working with the Politeworks Department in the town for a couple of years now, as the town has been moving forward with the new school project. And so this will actually change where the new school at Fort River gets its power. Right now, the school gets its power from the north end of the school property. It comes in at the, what used to be the exit, but now is the entrance and exit for students and faculty. But now it's going to move to the south end, which would be the bus and school entrance for school vehicles. So this is because the transformer moved. Transformer has now moved closer to the building. So this is the new feed line. We've made sure it meets all of our requirements and jives with the utilities. If we have to make any intersection changes, it's in a good spot and it avoids all the trees. So we've worked through this several times, and this is the best alignment we've come up with, and we highly recommend that we move forward with approving this.
Okay. Are there any questions from counselors? Kathy Shane.
Yes, thank you, Guilford. I'm glad to see this. My one question is, does it have the capacity or would it easily have the capacity, once we add the solar panels, for the extra feedback? I've understood a few places, schools had to wait a while to get that installed.
I believe they did, but you would have to ask EverSource for that question.
Okay. Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I just had a question with the condition. So it looks like the last page of the report that we got, it talks about, shall be in accordance with the following conditions. And the last sentence says, "The conduits to be installed shall not exceed two ducts, and all of said ducts shall be placed at a depth of not less than two and a half feet under the surface of public way." However, two paragraphs later, we are talking about four ducts. I don't think we're going to have two duck banks created. We're going to have one duck bank with four conduits. So I just want to make sure that when somebody is actually voting or setting on the conditions, that we will exceed two ducts. And I just want that corrected.
Yes, Guilford.
Yes, so explain that more. Two ducts go to each pole. So, and when you leave one pole, you have two. You come to the other pole, there's two, and then they join together and make four going into the, into the property. So in total, it's four.
Pam, does that answer your question, or do you need further explanation?
I just want to make sure that when we, when we record our conditions to be met, that we, in fact, are meeting that. I understand what Guilford's saying about how it's constructed, but it's just the wording here that, that leads to confusion. I just, I support it. I just want to make sure it's correct.
Okay. Guilford, did you need to review the wording?
No, the wording is correct. It is confusing when you, when you read it, it is confusing. It can lead you to think there's only two, but in total, there's four, once you pass the second pole. So it's just the way they write it. It's, I guess, EverSource's.
All right. Thank you. EverSource's. I'm sure they have their own dictionary. Bob Hegner.
The only question I have for this, whether this will interfere at all with anything we'll need to do to Southeast Street in terms of the improvements.
I didn't hear the question.
Do, is.
I'm sorry.
Does anything related to this, what, could it interfere to anything we have to do when we do improvements for Southeast Street?
No, we've made sure that everything aligns pretty well, including the work we're doing on the water and sewer over on Old Southeast Street. Everything is pretty much aligned to give us a clear window if we need to make any changes at the intersection.
So I have two questions. One is the issue of redundancy in terms of any kind of power outage? And I assume that that's already accommodated for in the building or in the wires? Is that correct?
The building has a generator, so they have their own standalone power if they lose power from the EverSource grid. And then there's the solar as well. When it's installed, they'll be able to back up from that as well.
Okay. My other question goes back to the one I believe that Kathy was raising, and that is the issue of, is, are these lines sufficient to carry the load so that it properly gets registered with EverSource and so forth? I mean, because that has been a problem in other installations, not just in schools.
That's, they, they understand what's going on, and I assumed, based on our conversations, they take that into account, but I can't answer for them if they actually did.
Okay. When you come, I mean, I'm not going to suggest that we postpone the hearing or hold up, or not close the hearing tonight, but I would like you to come back to us with that reassurance.
Okay.
Kathy Shane.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on Bob's question. Guilford, you answered that the placement wouldn't interfere with anything at the intersection. If one of the decisions was to widen the road, would it interfere with the widening of the road?
No, it's right in the middle. There is a person in the audience with their hand up, and I'm not sure if they are making a comment or they're with EverSource.
Ah. Let me ask, are you, if you are with, are you with EverSource?
Yeah, sorry, I'm having, my camera's not working. I apologize. So just to go back a little bit for the, these, this duct is for our primary. Your issue that you're, you're talking about in terms of the solar will be on your secondary, so that's from the transformer into the building. So this is, this particular discussion is about the primary coming from our grid to the transformer itself, which will not have any hindrance on solar.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Please introduce yourself.
David Neger, I'm a service designer for EverSource.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? Now, it's now the time for any audience participation? Is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue or ask a question? Athena, did anybody sign up? Please come forward. State your name and where you live.
Jessica J.
Please sit down and speak into the mic. Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Jessica J., and I reside at 85 Southeast Street, which is right on the corner of where it looks to be a structure pole location going up. And by the maps that I was just looking at on the screen up there, I guess, wondering where exactly this structure, is it a tall structure? I also have worked on EverSource projects before, subcontracted through EverSource, and I've done power lines in the area in Amherst. So I am familiar with what kind of goes on with that. And I was wondering what exactly this pole location is going to have.
Okay. Could you speak either, Guilford or the gentleman from EverSource? Could you speak to the actual structure and its location?
So I do apologize. I'm not sure, we're not putting up a pole.
Okay. So it's an underground conduit. It just says pole, so.
Correct. So both the duck banks are coming from pre-existing pole locations? The poles are already in the ground, so we're not installing new poles. They may be, they may be upgrading the existing poles, but there were not, there'd be no new pole locations.
Gotcha. I think that if we could go back to the last map screen, just so I could see. So we have two poles that it's going into that are already there, and
Correct.
I guess that might not, I don't think I have any other big questions on it besides the construction impact. Doesn't seem like it's too great for my property. I don't know if that's true.
Can you talk a bit about the construction impact?
What are you talking about to me? Sorry. This should all be in the road, so they won't. I don't know which, which property is yours.
Seems right. Mine is the bottom left-hand house in the corner, right there. Yep.
Okay. I mean, at any given time, they shouldn't stop you from getting to your house. You know, there should always be an access point.
Okay.
Is your driveway on Southeast Street, or is it?
It is.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, they'll, they will never stop more than one lane of traffic at a time, always giving access going both ways, so.
Okay. I think that might do it for my questions.
Okay. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the audience? Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing and seek a second.
Second.
Thank you. We're going to move immediately to a vote. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Tom Gothard is absent. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Counselor Walker. Has she joined us? No, still absent. Okay. So it's nine in favor and four absent. The hearing is closed. The motion to actually pass this request is on the consent agenda. We will be getting to that very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here, but you might want to stay for the consent agenda. We'll move on to general public comments. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room? If you have not signed up, please do so with Athena O'Keeffe. She is over here. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Athena, how many people have, have signed up?
No signups today.
Okay. And no one has raised their hand, so therefore, we will move on. There is no public comment being made tonight. We'll move to the consent agenda. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine, and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed. After I've gone through the list, a request to remove an item does not require a second. So the motion is as follows, to move the following items and the printed motions thereunder, and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of the 2025 Memorial Day Proclamation. 6B, adoption of the 2025 Pride Month Proclamation. 6C, adoption of the 2025 Race Amity Day Proclamation. 8A, approval of EverSource petition to install one solely owned underground duck bank at 70 Southeast Street. 9A, 1 to 3, approval of the town manager appointments to the Elementary School Building Committee, Jones Library Committee, Building Committee, and reappointments. And 11A to C, approval of minutes, February 4th, 2025, February 10th, 2025, and a regular, a public forum and February 10th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Are there any items that people would like removed?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. We'll move immediately to a vote. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Counselor Walker. Still not here. And Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
It's nine in favor, four absent. Okay. Of the resolutions for Memorial Day, the last paragraph, this is sponsored by Jennifer Taub and myself. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council, hereby proclaim May 26, 2025, to be Memorial Day, and urge all residents of Amherst to recognize the sacrifice of past residents and observe this day in remembrance of them. The Pride Month proclamation, either Pat or Mandy? Pat?
Now, therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Be it further proclaimed, we, the Amherst Town Council, encourage all residents to celebrate and affirm our proud and diverse LGBTQ plus community year round. Be it further proclaimed, this proclamation will be recognized by raising the progress pride flag from June 1st to June 30th, 2024, with a formal flag raising celebration and proclamation reading on June 2nd, 2025, at 5:30, and the inaugural Amherst Pride March on June 22nd, 2025, at noon.
Thank you. And for the Race Amity Day Proclamation, now, therefore, the Town of Amherst hereby proclaims Sunday, June 8th, 2025, to be Race Amity Day, a celebration of the oneness of the human family, and asks the community to join in the joint celebration, Race Amity Day and Youth Hero Awards with the Human Rights Commission. That will be at Mill River from 11 to 3 o'clock. There are no presentations and discussions. We're therefore going to move to the action items. The first one was on the consent agenda, so we'll move on to the long-term request for reservation of public ways, reservation of two-meter parking spaces and one 15 limited parking space at 43 Amity Street and closer to the adjacent sidewalk, bike lane and crosswalks. Paul, did you want to proceed? Is Bob supposed to be here for this?
I think he was told to be here at 7:20.
Okay. I can come back to this.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's best for him to be here.
I'm sorry?
I think it's best for him to be here.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move to Present for Art, because I know that we have everybody here for that. At this point, I'm going to ask the Chair, the Chair and the other members of the Public Arts Commission to come forward and be seated with us. Let me just mention to the council and the audience, they're going to make a presentation. I want to just point out that there actually is a motion on the floor already, and that motion would set a limit of $100,000. If later on, we'll talk about the motion more directly. Meantime, I'm going to call on Tom Wagner, I'll get it right, to call the meeting to order of the Public Arts Commission.
Okay. We have here a quorum of the Public Arts Commission, so I'll declare our meeting to be open. We will be proceeding as per the published agenda from the Public Arts Commission, which will consist of a presentation to the council and then our participation in questions, answers, and discussion. So with that, let's consider this meeting to be open.
Okay. Do you want to introduce your members? And also, I want to point out that Terry Holt is on Zoom, so she would be considered present in the meeting. Okay?
Yes. Okay. From my left to right, we have Lori Friedman. These are all members of the Public Arts Commission. Lynn Thompson and Dara Barwa Dixon. So we will each speak to a portion of the slide set that will be shared here. And we hope that this would take something in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 minutes, and then we're, we're open for the discussion.
Thank you.
Hey. You can move the mic a little bit. Yeah. Is this good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for having us and for the wonderful times it took for us to get our stuff together. It was really good. So I'm going to do an introduction that's maybe thinking of what we're doing. So for the first time, the inaugural Present for Arts implementation is under consideration with project. Will Amherst honor the full amount Amherst bylaw calls for in this first case? $250,000. Enough to draw a discussion, deliberation, and ultimately, decisions that can define and redefine Amherst's commitment to art as a meaningful piece of civic life. It's a sum representing that art embodies an honorable, justifiable, and necessary role to public life. This is a lot better. I forgot I had him on. Okay. Shapes, materials, colors, eye-opening, mind-opening. Arts serve to enhance the lives of audiences and makers equally. Public art manifests this living spirit, and as it resides in its public space, it calls to everyone who encounters it, because it belongs to all of us. None of us can dream of having the resources to surround ourselves with art, to travel far and wide, to see art, to organize our lives so that art influences our high spirits and open hearts and minds. Public art exists so that every one of us owns what alone, by ourselves, we could not own. The children and adults who experience artwork our town's bylaw imagines and supports will be able to think and say, just as they say about Amherst, "Amherst is my town. This is my town hall, our Puffers Pond, our library, our town's woodland trails, soccer fields, swimming pools, basketball courts, wetlands and creeks, our tennis courts, our commons, the very essence of community spirit upon which Amherst rests and has always thrived. Waves and generations of citizens will pass by and visit and see and be seen by whatever our first Present for Art brings us together to experience. Amherst Present for Art bylaw was first championed by its then Amherst Public Art Commissioner and its Chair, Eric Brody. The Present was first approved in 2016, and again, taken up in 2019 and approved with changes in an era of change, including the very structure of Amherst governance shifting from town meeting to town council. What's determined tonight may well begin to redefine Amherst's relationship to the arts and arts place in our town's identity. Its identity regarding its citizens' pride of place, its identity regarding public education, its identity regarding ways of learning and knowing and living. Public art brings up questions that get to the heart of what manner of acknowledgement does civic responsibility owe to its constituents. It's a sum large enough to give everyone something to remember and to tell others about, to see every day and be proud of, and it serves the wider public who make use of the elementary school's public space, to exchange books and plants and ideas, to play sports, and to vote. The first time something as significant as Present for Art is administered, we will be setting a precedent. And first times are memorable, we all think that. Think of first steps, first words, first kiss. They establish character, they inspire us with hope. The fact that Amherst has taken the time to see the good of public arts existence as a necessary part of living in Amherst is something to celebrate. Today, nationally and therefore regionally and therefore locally, drastic cuts in meaningful funding for the arts are proposed. The National Endowment for the Arts, along with the National Endowment for the Humanities and the Institute of Music, Museum and Library Services are marked for disruption, if not dissolution. Art and the free distribution of knowledge, books, digital arts, and all the other valuables our libraries and museums protect for us are being defunded. They're being defunded not because their destruction is cost-saving or represents any meaningful percentage of federal savings, but because they represent freedom and liberty to be the human being you choose to be. Art empowers people to think for themselves. It inspires people to act in their own interests, to speak up. to speak up, to exhibit their own ideas in music, dance, songs, sculpture, theater, performance, painting, photographs, drawing, mosaics, murals, movies, poetry, and prose. This federal punishment against art attacks the souls and spirits of all people. It leaves a negative space to be filled. By what? What we determine tonight will stand as a symbol of Amherst's identity and integrity. A significant piece of public art will build on Amherst's already art-loving reputation. It will remind people of Amherst's understanding that art is not a luxury, that it speaks to a human necessity. It engages our spirits, offers us opportunities to think and to say what we think. Hardly anyone walks away from a piece of art without thinking something and having an opinion, and sometimes new or renewed ways of thinking. It energizes, galvanizes, and sometimes changes our minds, or the ways we look at things and one another. Art really isn't expendable. It's intrinsic, made to help us find out who we are and who we want to be. Public art becomes something that belongs to every one of us. It affirms our human nature's nonstop search for meaning. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to move. Yeah. I think it was moving along. Hello, I'm Lynn. I am the newest member of the Public Art Commission, but I'm not new to Amherst. I've lived here since 1985, and my children have both gone through the Fort River Elementary School and the Amherst Public School Systems. So when considering public art, there are a few important questions to ask. What will it look like? What stories or story do we want to tell? What will it cost? What's the budget? Where should it go? And who gets to see it? The Public Art Commission recommends citing this new artwork in a highly visible, central location outside of the school building. An external location will offer our community the maximum opportunity to experience the work, as it will not be restricted by the school's operating schedule. This will also leave the interior corridor walls available as a canvas for our students for peer-to-peer expression. That has been also a practice for many years in the Amherst Public Schools. So looking at the site plan, we've highlighted an area in red for consideration, and there's kind of a close-up view of it also. It is visible from both entrances onto the school grounds, and is a focal point in a plaza-like location that will likely see pedestrian traffic as people move from both entrances up to the school. And the architects have cited this focal point with a tree. So school gardens are also a popular location for public art. Funded by the Percentage for Art Program in East Cambridge, Massachusetts, these sculptural gates are part of a community garden in a neighborhood park. Homing in on the final placement for our artwork will be part of the next steps, following input from the Percentage for Art Advisory Committee consultation with the town manager and other appropriate school and town officials. So now, let's think about the artwork and what story we'd like to tell. Well, the possibilities are infinite. The artwork could be realistic or abstract, be surreal or soar on the trees, or it might dance across the walls of the school. Perhaps the artwork will cover the ground or climb atop the roof. It could invite exploration, participation, or partnership. It can inspire conversation or imagination. It could provide a place to think, to play, to marvel. Being able to bring artwork of this scale to our community through the Present for Art Bylaw is an extraordinary opportunity, and the Public Art Commission is excited to participate in this process. Quoting from the bylaw, "The purpose is to promote the enjoyment of the arts by increasing the quantity and quality of public art in Amherst, thereby expanding the value and use of public buildings, facilities, and spaces, and contributing to the town's cultural vitality and economic well-being." As illustrated by these beautiful examples, public art is site-specific. Our artwork will be designed to our specifications to match Amherst's goals. Many factors contribute to the cost of creating public artwork, and Lori will continue with an outline of a project breakdown for a $250,000 project budget allocation.
Thank you. My name's Lori Friedman, and I want to speak to the budget and how, yes, and how the $250,000 would be allocated. We're using that number because that is what we're recommending, and to look at how it breaks down, because it gives more insight into how the money would be used. So we're recommending, we've done a lot of research, we're recommending that for this project, that a project manager would be hired to manage the project from the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, overseeing the project all the way through to the installation. The standard fee for this is usually 10% of the project. It can be done on an hourly basis, but that is generally not recommended. I think we can go with the 10% standard to get an idea of the cost of hiring a project There are many things that go into the budget, from design fee, engineering, fabrication, partner collaborations, installation, and community engagement. Artist designs, so when the RFQ goes out, we will receive a lot of submissions, and when we have the RFQ, it will be narrowed down to approximately four finalists who will submit proposals that are specific to the location and to the specifications. Those artists will receive a compensation for their designs, the finalists. Generally, that can be anywhere from $1,000 on up to $3,000. We have some examples of that, and example that I'll speak to later. Then there is the design cost as well for the chosen artist. And so you can see these sort of general breakdown of that. And then in fabrication and installation, which we've just joined into one number, although they really are separate, so we have allocated 50% for that, so the actual cost of the work itself, fabrication and installation, we're putting at 50%. There's also insurance, which a standard fee for that would be 3%. And then we have broken down documentation of artwork, signage, and project promotion. These can change a little bit, but we wanted to get enough allocated so that it would cover both the documentation of the project, the documentation of the artwork, perhaps a film that could follow the whole process from beginning to end, that could then be turned into an interactive website where it can be available for students going forward and anyone who wants to review this and learn more and have interaction with the whole process after it's completed. Contingency is 8%. That would, again, standard-based, a standard percentage contingency fee for miscellaneous costs that can't be anticipated. So there are various different community groups that will be involved in this project, city manager's office, Department of Public Works, people from the school. There's a whole list of people who will be involved in the archery. Whether there's any compensation for that would need to be determined. And we want to just also mention that Amherst, as I think you all know, is one of only two communities in the Commonwealth that has a Present for Art. So this is really significant and important. The other is Cambridge. And Cambridge has, they did a school project as well, that their budget was $650,000. They had a call for artists that they put out in 2020 that received 316 applications. There's a lot of material online that you can access about the Cambridge Public Present for Art Program, and it really is great for us because it sets a precedent, both in implementing this program and in its transparency and communication of how they have moved through it, and they've also had many other projects as well as part of this program, but this particular one was for a school project. And so it really will provide us with an invaluable blueprint to guide the commission on, you know, through this project. Their design fee for each of their four finalists, and you can go online and look at who the finalists were, which is very interesting, they were each paid $3,000. Those designs based, like are the ones we receive, will be based on site parameters and developed in consultation with the city staff and community members. We have a couple of examples. Here you can see one, a little bit out of date, that was on the last slide, gave some information about, yes, there we go. This is an installation indoors, but you can see the budget was $150,000 and what it would be in today's dollars, although that doesn't necessarily account for the materials going up at the same cost of, you know, the same cost that the dollar amount has gone up. And then another example on the next slide, which is, again, indoor sculpture, 2004, that had a budget of $120,000 and estimating that at around $200,000 now, just to give some ideas, but again, they're a little outdated. Being able to say, you know, for this amount of money, you'd get this or this is, I think, misleading, but we did want to give you some ideas. So we are proposing for this project the full amount to be funded. As you can see, the city of Cambridge, this is their example, which in 2021 had a budget of $650,000, and the installation will be taking place this year. It's a complex project with grafting, involved grafting for this tree, so I'm not going to go into explaining what it is, but it has taken a couple of years to evolve, so these projects don't always happen, you know, quickly. But we really believe it's worth investing the full amount, and I think Tom can give a summary.
So I'll just make a closing summary here. So the Present for Art Bylaw was, in its long deliberation and progress to becoming real, was envisioned to create something special. We do not ask Amherst taxpayers to fund public art. This would be the first instance of that, at least in very, very long time. The public art you see around town is paid for on grants and by donations. We managed to scrape together $500 per traffic box, and we have people very glad to come out and paint them, but we're not talking about that here. Public art, as my colleagues have noted, has a lasting impact on students and the entire community. We are thinking in terms of generations. We are talking about thousands of students and the people who come for various events and functions within the school there. So this is new, this is big, this is different. And as we've also noted, we are recommending the full allocation because the process needed to get the quality, the quality to match that that has been invested in the planning of the school, planning, construction of the school and the design, we think warrants a half of 1% here. The impact on taxpayers over time will be minimal. The back of the envelope computation suggests that it's going to be, that this portion, that 250, represents somewhere around $10 to $12, maybe $15 per household per year. In other words, a cup of coffee and a croissant. And that's one of the reasons, you know, we're taxpayers too, and we've looked at this, we understand $250,000 is a lot of money, but in the scope of what we're talking about, a $100 million project, $60 million town share of it, we think this is a reasonable ask, but this is up to the council. You have your job, we've done our research and advocacy, and now we're open for discussion of this.
Okay. You want to take the slides down so that we can see everybody? And it's time for the council to ask questions. Kathy?
Yes, as you know, I have a motion on the table, so I'd like to, I'm focusing my questions on what could a lower amount buy us. When I met with you before, a month or so before the last time this was presenting, I understood that at the $100,000 level, we would be able to buy potentially multiple pieces or one piece, and most of what you've shown us is significant, large pieces of artwork. And I hadn't really conceptualized it that way, particularly because if you look at the school site, I'm Chair of the Building Committee, the little circle you put as an example of where it could go, there's a pull-off there for parents who have children who need extra help getting in and out of their vehicle. So they get to pull into kind of that area, and on the other side of it is the vans that come in with the kids. So we've got, even though the site is huge, very little frontage in front of the entryway. There's a small patio, and we've got solar panels with canopies. There's a big canopy for the vans when they come in that wasn't in that drawing, it's in other drawings. So when we discussed it in the Building Committee, it was presented as, here's a wall on a couple different exterior walls, and here are some interior walls for mosaics and/or murals. And I think I sent you a couple of them that were extraordinary, that I'd seen, and this was elementary school level.
I visited the Shrewsbury School just last week.
Yeah, so my comeback on this is that I think we could lower the total, and we went to extraordinary lengths on the Building Committee to eliminate the $150,000 extras, including curbing that turned into, instead of granite, it's asphalt, in an effort to tell taxpayers we'd done our best to bring a high-quality product at a long-term cost that was more affordable. So I'm just curious on a, could you manage with a reduced budget? And I'm throwing $100,000 out as a term. And I realize Cambridge, the buildings they're building, as you can see from their numbers, are enormous, and they have coffers that are enormous. So we are talking about staffing cuts and others. So is there a lower level that the process you talked about could function?
I think the process could function at any level. The question is, what is our aspiration for a level of quality? To go back to a couple of your points, your questions, we presented back in March or so a range of findings from other schools, which, by the way, did not necessarily have Present for Art. Uh, that's. They just worked them into the budgets. The, also, we have done a massive amount of, of research since that meeting two months ago. And what we presented tonight is what we think are the reasonable answers to, for creating artwork at a, at a high level, at a high level of professionalism and, and quality. As to the moment, the point about citing, I re- remind you in the opening slide that what we're proposing to do is take out a tree that has already been strategically placed by the architect to be out of the way of those other functions that you mentioned. We are not talking about taking unallocated space. We are mindful of the, of the importance of not having an artwork, a work of sculpture interfere with the operation of the, of the school.
Counselor Ryan?
So first of all, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for speaking so eloquently about art. I don't think of art as a frill. I don't think of it as an extra. The town has made a commitment through its bylaw. This is our first time out of the gate. I don't think I need to remind anyone of what's happening on the national level with the arts and with what the attack that is taking place. So I think this is also an opportunity for us to, as we sometimes say, maybe too much, to stand up for our values. I do have a question. It seems like you have a pretty good sense of where you'd like to go. There's a sense, what I'm getting from the presentation is that what you are envisioning is something on a kind of sculptural monumental scale. It's a statement. You've got a site for it, if I understand it, but correct me if I'm wrong. Maybe you're still, but that's the sense I'm getting is that you see this as a, a very public visual statement of art and you want it to be, you have a pretty good idea of what you'd like it to do and where you'd like it to be. Is that a fair assessment at this point? Or is that too early?
But it is a bit too early, but we can speak to it.
Okay. So let me see where I can be. So, okay. So I, I think that we were trying to present an example more than an ultimate decision or end, end piece. Because it takes a lot more both community involvement, involvement of the different aspects of town government and all the businesses. It takes a lot of coordination and conversation about how much Amherst wants to show its valuing this great opportunity. Because it's big enough that it could be talked about. Like you probably have all looked at or seen, some of, most of you, the beautiful big bronze sculpture of a woman in Times Square. And, you know, she, she's monumental. And she is provoking incredibly good conversations for people who see her every day. And I think that's what the issue about where it is on the site would not be a decision that we would make. I think it would have to be made in concert with the, the architects and the school building committee that spent so much time designing and working with the designers on all of this already. And I, I don't think that, I don't think that that site is necessarily the only site at all that we should consider. So Lynn, did you want to say anything?
I think that the first thing that we really thought about was that it, we envisioned something that was outside of the building. So once you hone in on that, you, you look at things that kind of match that. And I, I think in looking at the site map, and like I said, that's an older version of the site map. So we don't have, we don't have all the information. So it's, it's sort of impossible to make, you know, any final decisions. And it sounds like within the, the list of next steps, it's extensive after the budget is agreed upon. And I think that when we, we did try to find examples with dollar amounts, but it's very, very difficult. And then when you consider, we don't exactly know what we're going to create. So how do you put a dollar figure on something that's not even conceived of yet? So it sort of does start with the, with the dollar amount and kind of funnels down a bit from there.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
Counselor Ryan asked sort of the question that I was going to ask, so I want to follow up on that. Does, does citing mean, I guess my question is, is citing decided before an RFQ goes out? Or would an RFQ, when you ask the artists, would you say, you know, here's three or four different sites we're looking at? Or places that it could go propose? And then you see what comes in and then obviously you pick finalists from that, but, or are you, are you sort of picking a site before you've even asked for design options?
I see it as a joint project. I mean, I think we would provide the sites, maybe some ideas we have, but I think you would hope that an artist or you would anticipate that an artist would come up with a vision. And where does that vision belong? And how does it fit in with, with our goals? So I do, I think it's a back and forth thing.
Pat Tangelis. I'm sorry, go ahead, Lori.
I add that this is where having a, hiring a project manager who has extensive experience with these types of projects will make a huge difference because they will be able to really anticipate some of the questions that are coming up now and be able to address them in ways that we may or may not be able to answer them. These are, this would be a professional person who would come in and help us design the RFQ and, and to begin that process with us and the different constituents who should be involved in that, which would be the town council, our commission, it would be involved, the architect, the school. So a lot of different things would go into that before that went out. Once that went out, it's very possible, and I would think that there would be specific. At that point, we could locate specific places where, you know, art could go. And at that point, it's really, we have the idea of, you know, what the, what we're exact, you know, what we're looking for, what, what we want the art to speak to. How we want students involved in that. That all goes into putting that together. That's a big piece of the work. And then looking through all of those submissions that we would be getting, that again, this, this manager would sort through them, make presentations, and it would be then decided there's another committee as per the percent for art that is, would, would come together. And I, it's a very long list of, of who those people would be. You know, including representatives from the school and so on and so forth. And then we would pick four or five artists to then actually make a presentation. And those present, once you get to those presentations, that's when you'll have specific citing, whether if we've offered three or four sites, or if we've just offered one. That's all to be determined once, once we get the go ahead to, to start this.
Pat Tangelis?
Yeah, I have some small questions. I think in a way, many of them already been answered. You talked about the usefulness of art being, you know, in terms of what it triggers and allows us to explore and see. And it seems to me that within a school context, I was particularly drawn to the installations that seem to involve spaces where children could play, explore, et cetera. So I would encourage that. And wondered if that's a direction that you're interested in going with. In terms of public input, you, you keep talking about the committee, this and that. And I'm wondering where the public input is and if it goes down to the four projects. And then the public voices their opinion, you're opening yourself up for a contentious, drawn out, dramatic, terrible time. And so one of the things I would encourage you and to, to do is really be clear about what you want. And bring that forward with the artists that you select. And fight for what you believe in. Otherwise, it may not happen. We, we've seen that over and over again in Amherst where something gets stalled and pushed back and, and et cetera, et cetera. We have lots of grinches in our community. So I guess somewhere in there is a question, but I want the art to be almost tangibly useful for the children more than for me or for anybody walking by the building. Because it can be both.
The bylaw itself gives us a lot of guidance as to how to conduct a process. And the main job of our group of the Public Art Commission is to help set up that process and then push a little bit back from it as we set up the equivalent of an art jury. That's the other committee that we've mentioned, be appointed by the town manager with our, with, with our input. So that's another, that's another layer of participation. The bylaw also calls for a public hearing. Just before we go to, to making some kind of final recommendation there. Well, indeed, well, we, it's a challenge to be out there to do that. We don't want to put up something that people are not going to want. I know this because I live in a neighborhood where we've put in the little, the little traffic roundabouts. I, I know what, I know, I know, I love them. I love them. But I know what noise they, they, they bring from our constituents.
Pat, the mic.
I'm seeing more and more how individual resistance can cost us time and money in this town. And when I say time, I mean your time, my time, other community members' time. There's a lot that I'm concerned about. And
We hear your guidance on this.
I don't know if it's any guidance, it's fear. But please, thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
I'm going to go next to Pam Rooney, who's not spoken yet.
Thank you. As you put together your RFP, whether you're looking for proposals or quotes, whatever your ideas that you're searching, a couple of things came to mind as I was looking through your lists. And one is that I hope we go with someone local. I hope we market to local and I hope we choose local. The citing in terms of, of that discussion, hopefully this site is something, site or sites, whatever we end up with, whatever the budget, is that something is visible, accessible to touch and feel by, by visitors all the time. I think of the opportunity to incorporate site furniture as art. And as, you know, whether it's play structures or the site furniture, those to me also can be very artful and very fun. I hope we don't limit ourselves to a monumental something.
Bob Hegner?
I was a little concerned about the presentation focusing primarily on sculpture and not on other art forms. And that bothers me a lot because I think there's a lot of local artists who don't do sculptures and sculpture really does limit in some ways what you, what you can do. So I, I would like to see a little bit broader discussion of other forms of art. The other thing I was a little bit concerned about was there was no mention of UMass or Amherst College or any, the art resources in town. And it seems to me that we should be relying on them or at least bringing them into the process. I mean, Amherst College did a mural at Bang Center. You know, the students did it and I think it's wonderful. And so we don't have to, we don't need to spend so much money to get good artwork, you know, placed, you know, in, in a building, you know, I, I'm, I'm a bit skeptical of this budget as well.
Well, a couple of comments on that. I think one of the reasons why we don't see the local sculptors is that nobody's paying for that. We're paying for murals. We're paying to paint traffic boxes. The schools are filled with mural art already with no capital funding for it. Having said that, yes, we will definitely look out, we have talked about this in our group, to the full range of resources at the university and the colleges here. And in fact, again, under the bylaw, we are instructed not specifically for the colleges, but to make full use of the best resources here in, in town. You know, in a way, we can do this for any budget. We can do something for any budget here. Again, the people who paint those traffic boxes, that's 50 square feet that they paint for 500 bucks. That's maybe the low end of the spectrum there, but you can go all the way up. And we've provided examples, including in the materials that you received back in April that were part of the town managers. But so we're not telling you that it's 250 or nothing. We're saying that we are making the case, have made the case in best we can for setting that highest level. We know this is your decision.
So I have a comment. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I think that it it adds an insignificant amount to what you brought to us originally to understand what others have done and what some of that could look like. The, as we look at something like this, I also appreciate the fact that you, and we all recognize that the school itself is already being, is already planned. And so adding something to the existing structure of the school may be possible, but it cannot be something that creates any kind of need for redesign. And at the same time, having recently been in Fort River, seeing a student art project on the wall as you enter, one that changes regularly is a great way to use that space for ongoing and changing art that students create with their teachers. So I think recognizing the need to kind of allow that kind of space to still be available for students is important. So, and I, the other thing, Tom, is I really appreciate the extent to which you have studied the bylaw and understand what it calls for. And in your last presentation, you also mentioned the various steps in the process to us as well. So, thank you. I didn't have a specific question. I just wanted to mention those various pieces. Thanks. Kathy, going back to you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, Tom, you did mention that we wrote into, I was one of the authors of the bylaws. You know, just so people have a context. And I, I wasn't an initiator. I came in after town meeting had already drafted and we modeled it off of other places to the extent we could. But since this is a school, we had envisioned, well, actually, we, everyone had asked to make sure we said users of the building would get involved. In this case, we have art teachers in the building and we have students in the building. And one of the very exciting things in the schools I visited is the children interacted with the artist to create the art. So it was owned by clearly, 40 years later, not the same children, but everyone knew that was conceptualized by the kids. And they did it around themes. So this is a solar, it's a climate centered, but they did it about around various themes. So different schools used themes. So that's just a piece that I didn't see as much in the, the monumental sculptures. And in town, we've got some examples of the low end of, I won't call them sculptors, but we've got a salamander that kids climb on in Mill River, way in the corner. You have to point to people where it is. There's another one up at Cushman. And if you know where they are, they're really fun. So trying to think of children can have So, trying to think of, children can have fun with it, with it. We have an amazing playground. So, that's why, if anything, I think of a lower budget pushes you to be more creative because you can't, you can't buy the really expensive stuff. You have to think of what else you can do. So, so that's the original concept. We didn't, I don't think any of us ever thought of 50 million as the base when we did 0.5%. You know, we thought, you know, maybe we could get 50,000, maybe we could get 100. We didn't think of this kind of money. So, and we originally said 1%, we went to 0.5. But we're in a different time even in 2025 than we were in 2019. So, I just want to point out that sculpture can also be low, it's not as low as $500, but it's not in the 40,000 with a design and an artist and a, you know, the, the steps you did, I can imagine with high-end expensive sculpture, you would need all those pieces that you laid out. But I think even the process can be done a little less expensively.
I think there's no contradiction between getting a professional artist and a high-end concept and input from students and, and teachers. We could even specify that in the, in the RFP. And it is one of the lessons that we've collected from the other schools. And as I mentioned earlier, I visited, got a tour of the Shrewsbury Elementary School last week and did hear about the extensive consultation with students and also extraordinary effort to carry over existing artwork from the old school.
Yeah.
So, I think we can be mindful of all of, all of those things. And then the other comment I'll make is that I think regardless of the budget level, the management structure that Lori mentioned is what we would implement. This is not something you just buy this, you know, off, you know, out of the hip pocket sort of thing. So, the, you know, what the budget numbers would be and the breakdown's going to be scaled for whatever is, is budgeted.
Counselor Hanke.
A higher budget would potentially, I want you to comment on this because I, I could be wrong, but I think I'm right. A higher budget would potentially allow for more variety, multiple artworks in multiple spaces on the project. The smaller the budget, it's more likely you're limited to one potentially or a much more limited thing. You showed potential for garden sculptures or garden artwork, not necessarily sculptures. The boxes could be painted maybe by the kids and, and the, the supplies provided and stuff like that, murals on the boxes, sculptural like the salamander somewhere in the playing fields, along with entrances that are also climbable and all. But if you've limited your budget, you're less likely to have all of those options. Is that correct?
We didn't, we didn't show it in the slides, but a lot of these more expensive projects were not just one piece. Lori spoke to that with regard to the Cambridge piece there because when I first saw it, I said, what, is that it, the stuff around the tree? Well, it was much bigger. But some of the schools we've looked at and we've provided references to, did in fact have kind of a program of artwork of different kinds around the, around the property. So, I think, I, I agree that, that the, that the bigger sized project is more able to solicit and manage that kind of approach to art.
I think, oh, boy. I also think we ought to remember to talk about the longevity of the piece that we are able to put in. And the matter of the material makes a big difference in how hard you can play with it. Like, if, it's great for kids to be able to play and interact with it, and that means it has to last. And the combination of all those things have been done other places and with success. And I think that we, we would need to be able to show you pictures of some of those things at some point and anybody else who's going to be involved in it. You know, involving the kids and the teachers is essential and it has to become part of their educational and own creative activities and learning about, you know. In elementary school, you, you have some really elemental things that you can work with. It's going to be something that naturally has to come with the, the putting the art where it goes, what it matters to the people. But, you know, the other thing is talking about what it is. Like, if Amherst can be really proud of something that it does, it makes the news that it's doing something extraordinary in a time when doing something extraordinary is really important for people's spirits and important for people helping themselves see that they can be as creative as any artist can be about how they live and what they want to have in their lives and their communities. And that's why I think it's an opportunity that it's a shame to miss it. Tom is right about, yeah, you can say any price you want and something can be done. That's a given. And I'm glad you say that, you know, in a true way. But I think that the budget that Lori showed you is a pretty modest budget for as much work as something is being asked when you're asking for all these different elements to go into the conception and then the execution in terms of how the community is not nominally involved, but integrally involved. And so, I think that the higher price is what you have to pay to get what you really can be, and in the end, makes the news of what you're doing because it's, it, it will change a lot of the attitudes about, you know, I think Amherst has always been known for its art and for art-loving and having a very welcoming place for art, you know? And so, highlighting that is a really important thing at times, not just this time, but any time. And the opportunity is there and I hate to see it drift away.
Thank you.
You know, or be too diminished. Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments of the Public Art Commission? No? Then we're going to move on with our vote. I'm going to suggest that you adjourn your meeting. Okay?
Hey, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Second.
And a second? All in favor? Aye? Aye.
Thank you so much for joining us. Okay. Alicia, you have your hand up?
Um, yes, I just wanted to make my presence known. Thank you.
Oh, Alicia, thank you. And I will note that. So, there is a motion on the floor. The motion was made back in March, I believe, and the motion was to limit the amount to $100,000 for, for the percent for art budget for the Fort River Elementary School site, new school on the Fort River Elementary School. So, let me just say, if you, that is the motion we have to vote on, okay? If you do not want to limit to that amount, then you do not vote for this motion. Okay? Yes? Any questions? Any other comments? George, I mean, sorry, Counselor Ryan.
So, I'm not going to vote to support this motion. I'm probably, it's obvious to many of you perhaps, but let me just try to make briefly three, three points. First of all, as I've said already, this is the first time that we're going to be using this bylaw. This is certainly financially the largest project in the town's history. This is a very public building and it's been pointed out by both my colleagues and by the members of the council, this is a school and will have a profound generational impact. Second thought is again, something I said earlier. I think that we've made a commitment as a community through the, the bylaw to the place of art in our public life. And while that has a, a cost, I think, well, I'll speak to that in a moment, but I think it's also a matter of just principle. We've seen what's happening on the national level. We shouldn't back away from our commitment to the arts. The third is the financial impact. If I have my math right, and you can correct me, we got the FinCom members here, but this is basically based on a $50 million bond. So, it's $250,000. It's a half of 1% of $50 million. We're going to be paying that for the next 30 years. So, I, I sat down and I thought, well, what's a half of 1% of my yearly contribution? So, according to my town's calculus tool, I'm on the hook for about $532 a year to pay for this school for the next 30 years. Now, I hope I will be paying for it for the next 30 years, but I doubt it. But for as long as I am paying for it, it'll be roughly about that amount. So, what's, what's half of 1% of $532? It's $2.66. Now, maybe my math is wrong or maybe there's something here that you can correct me on, but it's $2.66. That's my yearly contribution to art. So, this proposal, if it passes, would save me about $1.25 a year. Now, am I missing something here? Maybe I am. If I am, please correct me. I mean, the minimal impact, it's already been mentioned, but according to my calculation, it's, it really is minimal. The public good is, I think, enormous. The minimal impact, I think, is exactly what it is. And I think it's a chance for us to stand up for our values, especially at a time in which we're seeing our values being threatened. So, I cannot vote for this.
Are there other comments at this time? Okay. I will begin the vote. The motion is to support limiting this to $100,000. We'll begin the vote with Counselor Hanke. No. Bob Hegner.
No.
Counselor Lord.
Nay.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Did you say no?
Said yes.
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Nay.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
No.
Alicia Walker.
I'm going to abstain just because I missed the conversation.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
And Lynn Griesmer is a no. The motion fails. Unless there is an additional motion, the amount stays at $250,000. The bylaw is very specific. The council has to vote a different amount unless, and if they don't, it remains at the Bob Hegner.
I'd like to make a motion that we limit the amount to 200,000.
Shane, seconds. Okay. Is there further discussion? Counselor Ryan.
Going to make the same point I made just a moment ago. The impact is minimal and we want to give this committee the best possible opportunity to make a statement within the guidelines of the bylaw at a time when we need the statement to be made more than ever. So, we can will this, let's, let's stand true to our principles.
Point of, point of order, did Counselor Hegner want to speak to his motion?
I'm sorry, yes. Counselor
Apologize.
Bob Hegner, speaking to your motion.
Yes, I just think that we have to be thoughtful not of how much it's going to cost anyone individual over time, but the, the optics of a town where we're not funding the schools to what they have asked for, whether we, we, where we have a backlog of pothole-filled, you know, streets, that we have to be thoughtful and not, and be thoughtful of what we're spending on things. And this is a choice and potholes aren't a choice. And the, you know, the maintenance on facilities isn't a choice. This is a choice and we have to be thoughtful. I mean, I want to encourage this. I, I, I support public art at these schools. I just think we need, as a council, to exercise some fiduciary responsibility and say that we can't afford everything. So, if we have to cut back on something, let's cut back on, on this as well as other things.
Kathy Shane.
I, I want to echo, you almost used my words. I think the optics of this are extremely important. We have in our packets sewer rate increases, water rate increases, and we haven't yet seen, it's going to show up in people's tax bill, what they voted for, the increase for schools. So, we're asking a lot of our taxpayers and to say that we are mindful of what is going on and we understand the stress. And that's why I am supporting something lower than what the bylaw did. Indeed, if I could rewrite the bylaw, I would have put a cap in it when I thought about it, if I had thought what the potential was. But in any case, I think right now, this particular time, the optics are incredibly important.
Counselor Hanke.
The bylaw was written, I want to address a couple of things. The bylaw was written when we knew the prior school at a half a percent would have been, was on a bond of $36 million, which would have been 180,000. So, to say that it's unfathomable, people thought about, people, that no one would have thought that the new school would have a percent, half a percent for art above 150 or 200,000 is frankly ridiculous in my mind because the last school would have been close to that number. Using George's numbers, Counselor Ryan's numbers, at 200,000 versus what is expected to be a 250,000, half a percent, 53 cents a year per taxpayer savings. 53 cents. Let me talk about the optics. All of the conversation implies, when you talk about optics, that this money, that 50,000 that the town might not put to art, could be put somewhere else. It can't. It can't. So, I don't want anyone out there thinking that if we vote a number lower than a half a percent of the project, that that money can go to another infrastructure project because it can't.
Pat DeAngelis.
You're going to vote based on optics instead of voting on principle, on voting on what might be really valuable to this community. It is majorly important, particularly in the time we are in now, that we stand firm on decisions we made. And as Mandy said, I mean, it's so clear, we can't move that money and provide a cross position. We can't move that money and increase the school budget. We can't fix the pothole outside of my house with that money. So, so to try to make yourself look better to your constituents, you're going to fail on a commitment that this town made to art.
Andy Steinberg.
I spent a lot of time this evening listening and thinking back over a period of time because actually, my first exposure to the idea of percent for art was when Eric Brody came to me when I was back on the select board and said, I have this idea I'd like to talk to you about and see if you think I can bring this to town meeting and whether it is something that might get consideration. And we talked about it for a while and then the next piece, of course, was a past town meeting but needed, but to be cut back, needed revision at the time that council came in. I was on the committee with Kathy about it. And we talked about all of these issues. I think that we're, in the end, it was the principle. But one of the things that struck me as we were talking about this is that when I spoke as a member of that committee that was in the first year that was in the first year of council, my concern was that we might be in a position where investment is being made in the building that was not going to be visible and accessible to a significant amount of the public, and that we would be spending significant money for artwork that would not be appreciated or seen by members of the community who really would benefit from and appreciate that art. And it's that point in the end that is going to drive my vote to say no on this motion, because if there is a location that is most appropriate, it seems to me it is the elementary school that we're talking about, because it is going to be seen by many people who are both students, parents, teachers, visitors to the school, members of the public going to events. It can be a very visible and appreciated piece. And this is, if there's a place to make a statement about why art is important, how we value art, and art to be appreciated, it struck me in the conversation that this is that location. So I now have let you know how I'm going to vote and why. Thank you.
Are there other counselors besides George and Bob? George, go ahead.
First, again, I want to apologize to Counselor Hegner for speaking before he had a chance to speak to his motion. I'm sorry about that. I want to speak to optics, and I want to speak briefly to, well, first of all, just I agree with both Counselor Shane and Counselor Hegner that we need to address the, the burden that our taxpayers are under. And we all know, I think, that to do that would require some really difficult conversations. This isn't a very difficult conversation, quite frankly, and it's not about very much money. Conversation we need to have is a very difficult conversation. It's about a lot of money, and it would very much impact our taxpayers. If I try to explain to my constituents, which I will, how much this quote unquote, if it passes, how much it will save them, they're going to laugh in my face. So the optics, I think, are just the opposite of what you intend. I agree with you that there is something important we need to do, but this is not the place to do it. It's not going to have the impact that you seek, because when I explain to them what this is going to quote unquote save them, they're just going to roll their eyes. So I respect what you want to do long term. I think that's a conversation we need to have, and I'm not looking forward to it, but I think we need to have it. But this is not the place to do it. This is not a real savings at all, and it will, so anyway, thank you.
Bob Hegner.
We can disagree, but I resent being told that I'm only concerned about how I appear to my constituents. I talked about fiduciary responsibility as well as optics. So please, and please understand, I know that this money can't be used for something else, but it's all taxpayer money. It's all coming from the same source. So please, give me a break and let me speak my opinion without being accused of not understanding
I'm voting no on this, but one of the major reasons I'm voting no is the other public buildings in our future are nowhere near as visible as this building. They will not have the number of visitors. They will not have the number of students. They may not even be on a main road. They may not even have a parking lot for visitors. So, and they certainly won't have any playing fields that other people will be coming to. So this is an opportunity, and it's an opportunity to stand up against what we're seeing at a national level. It's an opportunity for us to make a statement of our values. Are there any other questions or comments from counselors? Then we'll move to the vote. I'm sorry, Alicia Walker, you have your hand up.
Sorry, I just had a quick question and a comment. I feel like, just me personally, I'm not feeling particularly strong either which way on this issue, and I'm trying to just process some of the new information that I'm hearing that I was unaware of before. And I think that Bob has good intentions here that I really do understand, because we are continuously passing initiatives that impact taxpayer dollars, and even if it's an insignificant amount for this one particular issue, it does all add up. And so I do think it's important to really be thinking about it, whether or not we go one way or the other, but to really be thinking about how intentional we are with these decisions. And so the one question I do have, though, is that we're saying that even if this were a savings, the savings that this initiative would yield is not allowed to be used on other things. So can somebody just clarify for me which, like, where is this money coming from? What happens if we don't use it?
Yes, I will start, but then I'm going to ask that the town manager might have to chime in. First of all, the way the bylaw is set up, it's set up so that this becomes a part of the project. Therefore, it becomes part of the debt of the project. It's set at that limit of half percent, but it's only on the percent that the town is paying towards the project. It does not have any money leveraged against what the Mass School Building Authority is paying. Paul, is there anything else to add to that?
No, I think that pretty much captures it. It's, it's money that the town would borrow to build this, whatever art is decided to be installed. That money would then be paid back under the debt exclusion by the taxpayers. It wouldn't be, if, if this project didn't go forward at all, there'd be no money collected for this project.
Okay. Alicia, does that help you with your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other counselor comments? Okay, right now, the motion on the floor is to limit the percent for art to $200,000 for the project on the Fort River Elementary School site. We're going to begin the vote with Bob Hegner.
Yes.
Counselor Lord. Pam Ernie.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
No.
Alicia Walker. Pat DeAngelis. Lynn Griesmer is a no. Counselor Hanke.
No.
The vote's five to five. Motion fails.
That's correct.
Okay. So the motion has failed, and we are back to the fact that unless there is another motion on the floor, the amount is $250,000. Are there any other motions on the floor? I'm sorry about my voice. Seeing that there are no other motions on the floor, the amount stands at 250,000. We're going to take a break. We will reconvene at 8:20. Thank you.
We're reconvening in two minutes. As you return, please turn your videos back on. The next item we're going to move to, in fact. Hi, Hala, you don't have to turn it on. Thank you. I don't want to watch you drive. Oh, my God. We're going back to the long-term request regarding the closure. George, you're back, right? Andy Jo, you're back?
Sir.
Okay, all right. Thanks for being with us, Bob Grant. I'm going to read the motion and seek a second, and then we're going to ask. I want to know whether people want a presentation or whether they basically just want to ask questions. So the motion is to approve the following for Jones Library construction purposes from June 15, 2025 to December 15, 2026, 24 hours per day, with fees waived, all as shown on the plan titled Jones Library-LC-100 Logistics Plan, July 9, 2024. In bullets, temporary use of public way at 43 Amity Street, including closing the sidewalk and bike lane. Temporary closure of the crosswalk that crosses Amity Street North and South at 43 Amity Street. Temporary reservation of 2 metered and 1 15-minute free parking space, spaces at 43 Amity Street, and temporary closure of the PVTA bus stop at the intersection of Amity and North Prospect Street. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Is there a desire for a presentation? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going to move along with that. Bob, do you want us to pull up the slides for that presentation?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Is that the slide that's?
Probably this next slide, if you could rotate it 90 degrees would be helpful. Thank you.
That's Athena for you. Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Thanks. So the plan that we're putting in front of the town council this evening looking for approval of is something that was developed going back about 18 months ago in consultation with the DPW as well as PVTA. It was recognized that space is at a premium on the library property for the reconstruction and expansion project and that in order to get competitive bid pricing, it would be advantageous to provide some additional space to the contractor. And as I indicated, we met with DPW, we consulted with PVTA, Paul Burns, the Director of Transit Operations. And what we came up with is what you see here in red, which would be closing down the three spaces that were referenced, the bike lane and the sidewalk to allow the contractor to come out into the right-of-way, where you see that red line. Maintaining a full width, and that's why I called attention to it. It would be a full width 12-foot wide travel lane, which is what a standard travel lane is. So we're not impacting traffic in any way. But then making provisions to accommodate pedestrian traffic with the closure of the sidewalk. And the dashed arrows are what you see here for the provisions for pedestrian traffic. I did note, you may or may not be aware, that the rear exit from the Drake second floor of that building actually exits onto Jones Library property. So it's essential that we maintain a pathway along the rear of the North Pleasant Street property that folks could get out of that rear exit and out onto Amity Street if necessary. So when you take a look at the construction fencing that's proposed, there's a pathway that's retained to allow people to have unobstructed access to Amity Street from there. So basically pedestrians that might normally walk down Amity Street would have to cross Amity Street either at the North Pleasant Street intersection, which is a very safe intersection to cross that because it's an all pedestrian exclusion phase in the traffic controls where pedestrians can walk in any way of any of the four crosswalks, walk down the other side, the south side of Amity Street. And if then they're going to North Prospect Street, cross through the existing crosswalk onto North Pleasant Street. So there'd be a little bit of a detour for pedestrian traffic, but not a tremendous detour using existing crosswalks that are already there. So that's really what the plan is from a pedestrian standpoint. There is, as was indicated, one bus stop that would be eliminated. And when I reached out to Paul Burns, he cited in Athena, if you don't mind, if we could go back one slide and rotate it back to the original rotation. This is a map of the 33 route that goes through the center of Amherst. And what I circled in red is the one bus stop that will be closed. It's on the westbound route of the 33 route. And what Paul indicated was he felt that there was no need to relocate that bus stop, given that there's an existing bus stop about 700 feet away from what is currently there. We did ask if he wanted us to plan for relocation, and he said no, he didn't believe it was necessary.
Are there questions from the council? Pam?
Thank you. I'm looking, seeing for the first time that the bike lane is actually getting truncated. And I wonder if, does this plan include signage to warn bicyclists that the lane ends? Because they certainly will be using, they need to get down Amity Street. How does that get routed so that they're not suddenly thrust out into traffic? I guess that's the primary question. My secondary question is, I think I heard Lynn say that these spaces are not being paid for. They're simply being allocated to the contractor. Is that right?
That's correct.
The question that I have actually for the town manager is, do we normally charge for use of parking spaces for contractors?
So if you look on the, if I can answer that, Lynn?
Please.
So if you look on the plan, there are actual signs that would be installed or on the plan, LC-100. It shows the share of the bike signs that would go up in the street in this plan. Yeah, so for private contractors, we typically do charge for use of parking spaces. Since this is a town project, it would be the town paying the town. So we have waived the, or recommend that we waive the fee. One of the three parking spaces is a 15-minute parking, so it doesn't generate any revenue. The other two parking spaces would generate revenue that we would be foregoing.
Okay. Does that do it, Pam? Okay. George Ryan, Councilor Ryan?
If Athena is able to put the map up just for a second that shows the pedestrian pathways and the crosswalk that's going to be eliminated. It's easier for me to describe what I'm going to try to describe without it in front of me. Thank you. The North Pleasant Street intersection is a signalized intersection. It is a very safe one to cross, relatively speaking. The crosswalk that's, we're being lost in front of the Jones has, it was relatively safe because it's a raised crosswalk. And though it always doesn't have the movable sign in the center there, it's often there. And so, and then at Lincoln, we have a rapid flashing beacon that can be activated. The one crosswalk and the one intersection that is the most treacherous, and I can speak from personal experience, is the one at North Prospect Street, which is going to be used a little bit more these days. Because if you want to move into, if you want to get from, if you're coming up Amity towards the downtown, but you want to go through the North Prospect route, you're going to have to cross at that intersection. And I'm just wondering if there's any way we could get one of those movable signs placed there just to try and discourage people who are going one direction speeding up because they're leaving town and in the other direction are beginning to slow down a little bit. That's the only thought, is that one crosswalk is the most treacherous and is going to be used more now than it has been in the past. So it's just a request, if there's any kind of signage that we could put there. I know they get bent, they get damaged, they get knocked over. But at least they would give a warning to drivers that pedestrians do use this.
If they knock it over, it'll give them a warning. Paul, did you have a response to that?
Yes, we can look into that.
Thank you. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, the, this diagram is good. The crosswalk that's currently in front of the Jones Library, that's a raised structure. Will we be painting it over so that people don't get confused as to it being a potential crosswalk? Because I can see somebody might start across it and then realize in the middle of the road that it wasn't going anywhere.
So you're suggesting putting up a barrier to using it? Is Paul, does?
Yeah, I think there's a sign planned for there saying crosswalk closed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank you for addressing the issue of the bus stop. That was my one concern, but you're right, there's one right down the street at Lincoln Avenue. Any other questions or comments? Kathy, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
It's kind of lost in the clouds. The, what was, what George raised about the other side, crosswalk, is there any way that could be raised a bit? You know, to, you can't, because of where it's located, as Pam is saying, she doesn't think so. But it's just, it is. People slow down for the one that's being eliminated because they know what's going to happen to their car. They barely look at the other one. And it's what George just said, you know, which is why most people, if they can, will walk to the one in the middle and cross. They know this other one. So it's just something to think about. I'm not even sure it has the big yellow signs with a person crossing on them that gives you a heads up. So there might, it might be if we can't do raise, something that would just say, there is a crosswalk here.
There are additional signs planned, from what I'm hearing from the county town manager. Correct, Paul?
Yeah, I just don't know because we don't always have them when it's that near to the other one. I'd have to go look.
Okay.
So we can look at signage. There are signs before that crosswalk that talk about construction ahead to alert people that there is a construction site coming up. But we can look at, I don't know about raising that, that's a pretty major construction project, but for a temporary side crosswalk. But I think the signage and alert, because it will be more heavily used, I think you're right on that.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. I think we're up to Counselor Lord.
Could you please clarify, if a yay vote, is it to go forward with this?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yay. Thank you. Yay.
Pam Rooney? Yes. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane? Yes. Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angelus?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Bob, thank you for your patience and for joining us.
Thank you.
That motion passed unanimously with 10 counselors present. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the Amherst Pelham Regional School District budget. And there are actually two motions. The first is in accordance with Section 5.5(c) of the Amherst Home Rule Charter and in compliance with Sections 5.5(a) and 5.5(b) of the Amherst Home Rule Charter to separately consider and act on the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Budget and Assessment Method for Fiscal Year 2026 because it would be prudent to do so due to the regional agreement with the three other towns in the regional school district. Is there a second?
Second?
All this motion does is basically say we can take it out of order of the rest. We can pull it away from the rest of the budget. Are there any questions? Okay. This does not actually vote for the budget. That will be the next vote. And at that point, I'll ask the Chair of the Finance Committee to speak to their recommendation. Okay, we'll begin this vote with Pam Rooney. Yes. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angelus?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Yes.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
It's unanimous with 10 counselors present. The next one is actually voting for the budget. And I'll read the motion, then I'm going to turn to the Chair of the Finance Committee. In accordance with Charter Section 5.5, having been referred to the Finance Committee, having been recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May 19, 2025, a public hearing held on May 12, 2025, notice of which was posted for a minimum of 10 days on May 1, 2025, to adopt Council Order FY26-02 in order approving the Amherst Pelham Regional School District FY26 budget and appropriating the Town of Amherst's share of the budget assessment as shown on page 11 of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Kathy, would you like to speak to the Finance Committee's recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Lynn. The Finance Committee submitted a report that, I encourage you all to read because it also provides a flavor of the discussion we had with the Superintendent, the School Committee, and heads of the School Committee and the Finance Director. We voted unanimously to recommend that the council approve Financial Order FY26-02. And this will provide an assessment of Amherst of $19,744,008, which is a 4.81% increase over Amherst FY25 assessment. I want to point out that this was the proposed budget that was proposed to us. This was the recommended. So we are endorsing what came to us from the regional school. And they noted we had to do a little research, but in their committee meeting, this budget will require an estimated 11.5 FTE reduction to get, to hold the total budget to 5%. The other thing I think that's notable because of reading some of the press is the budget follows the regional assessment method and returns all four towns to the share of the budget according to that agreement. That means that each town assessment will be about similar to their share of students of total enrollment. Returning to that method results in a substantial increase to two of the four towns. The reason Amherst is lower is we were already at the assessment method. This should be a one-time occurrence. Although we voted in favor of the 4.8%, we note that the total paid by the four towns will increase by 6.5% and the total budget will increase by more than 5%. Absent new sources of fund, such increases will not be sustainable. Town revenues are forecast to increase in the 3% to 3.5%. The decline, even with declining enrollment. One other point I want to make is we also asked during the discussion whether students in the middle school and the high school can take classes in the other school building, allowing resources to be used more efficiently and supporting choice of classes. This could include things like language, math, and other classes. The answer was right now, this is not possible. It will require changes. There does also not yet appear to be a plan for the sixth grade move to the middle school with full integration in the middle school, rather than a separate school. So we were told that this might require a change or an amendment in the regional agreement to avoid the overhead. I just want to conclude with, we totally support the schools and recommend that the council vote for the appropriation. We recognize, we all recognize, that the region faces challenge of how to adjust to declining enrollment and continue to provide a strong educational program for students. We will need to work together with the other towns to plan for the future. That closes my summary of the report. I recommend you look at it for some additional details.
Thank you. Other council comments before we move to a vote? Bob Hegner?
Yes, I want to echo Kathy's remarks. I think we support the budget as it is, as it was voted by the school, regional school committee. We recognize, however, that, you know, this is not sustainable. These increases are not sustainable. And we have to figure out a way, either, you know, to reduce, somehow reduce these, the growth of this expense, and we can't afford it.
Pam Rooney?
I wanted to say thank you to the Finance Committee for looking fairly closely at the school budget and trying to get a handle on how it's composed. The inconsistencies that appeared in, you know, in some of their numbers. And I really, I really appreciate the fact that people are asking really good questions about how it's structured and are there ways, in fact, that they can be managing their affairs a little? I'll use the word better, that's not a criticism of them, but keeping, keeping a little closer handle on the costs that we're seeing escalating.
Thank you. I want to just mention that in the past, there have been discussion of additional cuts over the several years. And yet if you look at the cuts in actual staffing, they have not occurred. So I am going to ask that at some point in the fall, which I believe which I believe the magic data sometime around October 15th, we get a report back that tells us just exactly where we are with relationship to cuts in staffing and student enrollment as compared to previous years. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Then the motion's been made and seconded. We're going to move to vote. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angelus.
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer's an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
It's unanimous with 10 counselors present. That means we are also the third town to vote the budget. And you noticed that we did not have to have a separate vote for the assessment method because it is consistent with the regional agreement and mentioned in the motion. The final motion tonight, and I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then we'll have a presentation. Doug Walker has joined us, and I believe there might be one other person in the audience to join us as well. Hold on one second. No, I don't see them. Okay. All right. The motion is in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40a, Paragraph 5, to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to footnote M to the Planning Board for public hearing within 65 days and report to the town council, to Community Resources Committee for public hearing and recommendation to the county town council, and to Governance Organization and Legislation for final review of clarity, consistency, and actionability. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Doug Marshall, you are with us tonight. Would you like to speak to this proposal?
I regret, I confess, I was not expecting to be the only one present to present this to you. But given that I am, I'll try to cobble something together in my head for you that's coherent.
Yes, we were also expecting Jesse Magr, but I don't.
Jesse informed us that he was not available. I was expecting Nate Malloy from the planning staff to also be available. But that's fine. This is a fairly simple adjustment to the zoning bylaw that the majority of the planning board is recommending to the council. It would take footnote M with to Table 3, which lays out the dimensional and area requirements for lot development in the various zoning districts, and change the minimum square footage for additional apartments or condominiums in the RG district from 4,000 to 6,000 square feet per additional unit. This is, this seems to have been prompted in part by the recent state regulations regarding accessory dwelling units, which now are basically required, allowed in any single-family zoning district. And it also, it was prompted in part from a couple of recent projects close to downtown, I believe, that were proposing to take advantage of this footnote for multiple units to be added on a couple of parcels. And the, in one case, the local historic district commission rejected the project because of its density. And I think in the other, in the other case, there, let's see, in the other case, in the other case, it was also rejected. So, so the thought is that maybe we would take a step back and, and, and reduce the allowable density throughout the RG district. But at a later date, we would look at allowing greater density in some portions of the RG district. So this is essentially a first step. And again, it's recommended by the majority of the board.
Thank you. Are there counsel comments? Counselor Hanke.
The state is in a housing crisis. A recent report from A Home for Everyone, the Comprehensive Housing Plan for 2025 to 2029 in Massachusetts, reported that Amherst has more than 24% of its population paying more than 50% of their income for housing, and that a shortage of homes is the root cause for high housing costs, and that local zoning doesn't provide capacity for all the types needed in places where we need them. That report then went on, well, that report didn't. There was another state commission called the Unlocking Housing Production Commission that had a recent report that stated, quote, "Large minimum lot size requirements significantly hinder housing affordability, contribute to exclusionary zoning practices, and encourage sprawl, increasing automobile dependency and inefficient land consumption. By requiring excessive amounts of land per home, these regulations inflate housing costs, limit the availability of buildable land, and reduce housing diversity." Direct quote from the report. "The costs of reducing density, as put forth in that report, go against nearly all of our town manager goals: climate action, transportation, housing, racial and social justice. I struggle to understand why our planning board would propose a zoning amendment that would go against our master plan and all of our town manager goals. I cannot vote to refer this."
Counselor Ryan.
I'm just, first of all, curious what staff has said or thinks about this proposal. I'm just wondering what staff's input is to this point.
So I don't believe the staff that worked on this is present tonight. So we could get whatever they wrote up. But this is a planning board vote, an initiative by the planning board, not staff.
In other words, you're saying it was not initiated by staff?
Correct.
Okay. George?
My understanding also is that regardless of how this vote goes, it gets referred anyway. Is that correct?
That is our understanding of the state law.
Can I offer a point of clarification?
Please.
The state laws, the MGL that's quoted in the motion, it says the town council shall refer. So that applies to the referral to the planning board only. It doesn't apply to the referral to CRC to hold the hearing, or GOL to review for clarity, consistency, and actionability. So if the council voted not to refer, or if the motion fails, then we would have to seek advice about how the council would hold the hearing and review the proposal if the referral failed. We would, we would need to seek some advice about what steps the council would be required to take if the referral failed, because the state law indicates that the council shall refer it to the planning board for hearing. But it doesn't address the need for the council's hearing or a GOL review.
Is there any further questions? Yes, Pam Rooney.
Point of order. So doesn't, doesn't the motion say, I mean, our motion says and refer it to CRC for public hearing. So doesn't our, doesn't our motion do what we want?
Yes, but I'm, I'm sorry. My point was that if the motion failed, that it would be unclear if the council would be required to hold a public hearing on an amendment that it did not choose to refer, even though the state law requires that the council do so. Yeah.
I'm just unclear, if we're required to refer, can we not refer? That's what I, I think you said we could.
The law requires that we refer it to the planning board. The law does not require that we refer it to CRC and GOL. But on the other hand, if the planning board holds a hearing and then comes back to us with a recommendation, how can the council act?
We would need to look into that if this motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. Understood, I think. George, did you have further comments?
Well, I raise these questions because I take the matter of referral seriously. This will cost the town money and time, staff time and staff money, and town money. And normally, that's not, you know, I think that's reasonable. If I have a sense that this is a reasonable proposal, that's backed by, or at least has some input from staff and is backed by, it's a 4-1-2 vote. And apparently, the planning board hasn't, I mean, we have the chair simply describing what we have written in front of us. I don't find any really compelling argument for why this should be referred or why we should proceed. Something about things being out of character, and it's too dense for the RG, and it's a first step towards what? It seems to me to be a step backward, given all the things we've been told about the need for housing. And so I'm just looking for some help from either the planning board, or some of the others who've supported this, as to why I should spend town resources and time on this proposal. So I'm still looking for help.
Thank you, George. Pam?
Thank you. I'm looking at it in a bigger picture. And that is that as we look at the RG district itself, I've, I've been following the planning board conversations about allowing greater density in other areas of town, not specifically the RG, but in fact, areas such as University Drive, possibly in North Amherst, possibly on Belcher Town Road, where there are concentrations of space and the opportunity to do denser housing in those locations. Given that we have accessory dwelling units that are by right in all parts of town, I think that is already a step in the direction of, of some of the infill that people are looking for. So as a member of CRC, I am, I am interested and open to having this discussion. Clearly, there's a lot to say about it. And I don't think, I don't think tonight is the opportunity with, to take a lot of time on the subject. I would be happy to have it referred to CRC so that we can, in fact, delve into the details of it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Then we're going to move to a vote. And in this case, we begin with Kathy Shane. If you vote to refer, it's an aye. If you vote not to refer, it's a nay.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg. Counselor Walker.
No.
Patty Angelus.
No.
Lynn Greasmer's an no. Counselor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
No.
Counselor Lord.
No.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
The motion fails for referral. We'll have to get back to the council. It was nine opposed, no. Kathy, did you vote yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It was two in favor, 10 and eight opposed. And we will get back to the council as to what we have to do next. Okay? That concludes our action items for tonight. We've done appointments. So we're on to committee and liaison reports. BCG, no report. CRC, Pam Rooney.
We have been working on the solar bylaw and are inching our way forward to being prepared to put a pool of candidates together for the ZBA and for the planning board.
Thank you. Do you expect to have them?
But in June.
Yes, we, we expect to hold the interviews on the two meeting nights, two meeting afternoons in June, which I think are the, I want to say 12th and 26th.
Okay. Thank you. CR, Elementary School Building Committee, big day tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's a big day tomorrow at 4 o'clock. I think people know we, we have, I'm going to call it the raising of the beam, but it's got some other topping off. Even though we're not going to the top, we're going to the archway. And they'll be short, really short, like two, three minutes, several people speaking. But what people should know is if you get there early, there's a beam on the ground that with magic markers, and you can sign the beam. And we've been assured by our amazing OPM that if somehow over the weekend, words got on that beam that we were crazy about. They have white paint, and they will be painted over. But the kids, the kids are going to have that opportunity. The schools, they're, they're ferrying people back and forth. We don't meet again as a committee until the third week in June. So we're, basically, our meetings now, we're getting updates on construction. And if you haven't seen it, I believe Sam, our communication director of the town, is starting to put up pictures. We're now at three floors where the people can walk on the floors. They're not just beams anymore. It's starting to look like a building. It's very exciting.
Okay. George Ryan, you had a question?
Yeah, I didn't get my hand up quick enough. Just a question for Counselor Rooney. And I'm sure, I apologize, I'm sure I missed this. But you have declared the pool sufficient for both planning board and ZBA? You haven't. You're still taking applications for both bodies. But you are planning to do some interviews.
We, we hope to have, we have a meeting this week. We have a few more people who have sent in calves. And we may have a sufficient pool at that time. And if so, we hope to do interviews next, our next two meetings.
Am I forgetting the procedure here? Normally, you declare the pool sufficient, and then you, somebody help me.
Sure.
There, there is time. If the pool is declared sufficient this coming Thursday, between this Thursday and the first hoped-for date of interviews, that is just hoped for, plugged in in case the pool is declared sufficient so that people are holding the dates, that there is time to notify them, to submit their statements of interest, and post those statements of interest in time in accordance with the policy to take those interviews at that first meeting in June for CRC. There is still time to comply fully with that policy if the pool is declared sufficient this Thursday.
I guess for me, the question is, at what point are applications no longer going to be considered? I just, in reaching out to people, and so what date can I give them?
According to the policy, the pool is closed as of the time the statements of interest are published on the website for the meeting for the interviews, which is after the pool is declared sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Kathy.
We're, we're continuing to meet twice a month tomorrow.
Twice a week.
Pardon?
Twice a week.
Twice a week. Oh, twice a week. Oh, twice a month. My goodness, that would be normal. Twice, twice a week. Tomorrow, we're meeting a bit early. We're starting at 1:00. And it's DPW Enterprise Funds and Water and Sewer Rates. And on Thursday, will be the final set of departments we haven't yet reviewed, and that's conservation inspections, sustainability, veterans, social services. It's a long list. And what our process is going to be then, the following week, we each will, are taking responsibility to write up a section, and we'll begin to talk about the overview of all of it in terms of recommendations other than we love the budget, or we hate the budget, or, you know, there won't be generalities. And so that will help inform an executive summary that will go with the contents. And we're, you know, for, for people, one of the things that was interesting to me was I went back and found the last Finance Committee report that was before this form of government. And the amount of information in it was huge, depending on what you were looking at. So one of the things we're trying to do to do is put information that may not be otherwise easy to find, that used to be easy to find in the reports we got, but now it's a bit more research for the counselors who are doing the work. So we are trying to ask questions and put answers to those questions in the report that go beyond just, they asked for X dollars or this kind of increase. So you're gonna see a few sections of the report will be longer because of that.
Having watched several of your meetings now, I just want to thank you for the thoroughness with which you are looking at this budget. It is really, really amazing, and I've learned a lot.
You know, I think one of the reasons that, when I look backwards, I said, this wasn't unusual. This was business as usual, that the Finance Committee's role was to ask questions and probe beyond what just the ask was.
This is one of the best ways to understand the comprehensive nature of our town government. Okay. A question? Okay. GOL, neither the Chair or Vice Chair is here. I'll try to give some summary. Maybe Pat can add into it. And maybe Hall. So we dealt with three proclamations. We had another discussion about the AHRA Successor Committee, and we have not declared the pool sufficient for either Finance nor Charter Review Committee. And that's about it. Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I just have a question. If the pool is not sufficient, and at least, well, we've only got three residents and one is vacant, but one is due to expire, can that person stay on? Is that what we would do?
The person's more than welcome to stay on if they're willing.
If they're willing to stay on.
Yes, if they're willing to.
If they're willing, no, say.
The council would have to extend the term formally.
The council would have to officially extend the term, because it's.
Before we extend the term, however, I think we need to check with the individual.
No, no, I'm, I think we would. You know, I just, I, I want to say, you know, when we're going into the Charter Commission review, how valuable those three positions have been. And the fact that they're three-year terms can help with a council that has two-year terms, because they can be, if they stay on, it gives you someone who's been following the process. And so it's not, we'll be at a point probably soon where almost everyone who's on hasn't been through a budget before. So it's useful that three people might have, or at least two people might have. So I think it was very wise that the Charter Commission put the ability to do that with Finance, and maybe we should can think of it with a couple other committees.
Thank you. Jones Library Building Committee?
No report.
Town Services and Outreach Committee, Andy?
Yes. You've received several, excuse me, I'm not getting my finger on the buttons firmly. You received the report from the committee, but also you received a report about where we are in recommending consideration of establishing a Transportation and Parking Committee along with initial workups. I wouldn't say that they're drafts that we're proposing yet for consideration because we want comment before we do that. We sort of looked back on what the experience was recently with one of our other committees that came forward with a proposal about the Reparations Committee, and then there was a lot of discussion, and they felt that they had to go back. Well, we were trying to just be one step ahead and give, and throw out where we are now so that before we make a proposal that's for action, that we have an opportunity to get comment. So the motion at the last meeting was to ask individual counselors to comment, and it was an intent to have discussion today. Though if you have questions, of course, we will try and answer them. But what really we were after was just encourage comments and also from town staff, from the current Transportation Advisory Committee, and from the Commission of People with Disabilities. And we have, our next meeting is on June 5th, and that is why we had the date that we put forward in making the request several days in advance so that the committee would have a chance to see any comments. And it's been a lot of work and that has gone into this so far. The other thing that I just wanted, and this is my personal observation of the process that we went through, that I think that the real turning point for us, where we went from, this is something that seemed good, we were thinking about it, and we became more enthusiastic, was we were able to look at Northampton very closely. And we were extremely benefited by having two people from Northampton who came and met with the committee and talked about what their commission does and why it works and why it works well, and spoke with great enthusiasm. And so that if you would like to see that one hour meeting with Counselor Alex Jarrett, who's also Council President, and a member of the Commission, and the Director of the Department of Public Works, who is the Chair of the Commission in Northampton, it's about one hour's worth of a meeting. I can send you the date for that meeting, or you can probably get it from Athena and have the opportunity to see that yourself. Because I did, I did think that that was sort of a very important point for the committee process. So I think that's our report, Lynn.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
I just wanted clarity on this particular issue. Is the council going to have an actual discussion on an agenda related to this, or should individual counselors be sending their comments to TSO directly?
Right now, the comments will be sent directly to the Chair of TSO. However, I believe that it's time to bring this for a council discussion, and I'm going to suggest that. Okay.
Lynn?
Yes?
Yeah, I guess the question that I had is that we had assumed that this is the beginning of a very long council discussion, and that when we got comments, that the drafts that we presented on the two items that require council action, which is the committee charge for the Commission and the modifications would be required to the Town Council Policy on Public Ways, that is going to require all of the normal processes that occur with committee discussion, so that there's certainly going to be two. I think that what we'd be looking for is whether you, we were trying to avoid having that second discussion, but we will take direction from you as Council President as to any modification in the process that you request.
As I look at future agenda items, and, and when we come to that item on the agenda, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Okay? That was why I had my hand up. Counselor Ryan?
I just want to echo Andy's point about the, listening to the conversation, if you have the time, and I know time is precious. Also, you might just want to log on to the City of Northampton website and just take a look at their Transportation and Parking Commission. They have a nice website. It only takes a few minutes. You can kind of explore it, because that's, that's close to what I think we're heading towards. And if you like what you see, or if you don't like it, or if you have questions, that might be a good place to start as well.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Paul, did you have any comments at this time?
I do. First off, I want to thank the Finance Committee for its work on the budget so far. Our staff, the town, the department heads who've been attending have been challenged and welcoming the sort of in-depth conversations and the, the depth of the questions that you've been posing to them. And we really appreciate that you provide them in advance so they have a chance to draft up responses for you. So I think it's been a really strong budget process. You know, it's always a sprint to get through the entire budget. It's a big budget, but you've been doing a really diligent job at it. So we, our town staff have really appreciated it, that the substance of the discussion has been very strong. The other thing I want to mention is that our bond rating has been reaffirmed as a AA+ with stable outlook. So why do we care about the bond rating? The bond rating of the town is what the bar, people are gonna lend the town money through a bond offering, look to, to see how, how strong our ability to repay that money is. And so a good bond rating means that they will pay, they were willing to take a lower interest rate versus a high-risk bond. So AA+ is about as good as we can get at this moment in time. We do everything humanly possible to get the best bond rating that we can. So, and I'll share the bond rating with you directly so you can see what Standard and Poor's has said. They talk about our consistency, consistent positive operations, our strong reserves, our well-entrenched financial management policies and practices with emphasis on long-term planning. They expect, they look at a two-year horizon when they set the bond rating. They expect conservative budgetary decisions over the outlook horizon of two years. The, and a very proactive management team. They give us a lot of credit for our management team. Where we suffer compared to our peers is in our, basically, our demographics. Our income metrics are below the county because of our large student population. So our income because of the students looks low, and we try to make some arguments as to why it's not the students' income, it's the parents and guardians' incomes that are supporting those students, and that's why they should give us credit. We've made that argument as strongly as we possibly can. They sort of are stuck with certain metrics that they look at. But they do also, but we get a credit in the sense that having the university and two colleges here presents major employers who have a stable employment base, although they did do a lot of investigation with us this year about the impact of federal cuts to the university and the colleges. So what I, what I really want to emphasize is that the town has and has maintained really strong budgetary practices, strong budgetary policies, and our staff have been so good at delivering the information that is needed. And they, you know, they meet our, all of our finance staff, including Athena, and everybody's been involved with our budget process. So I was really proud of our work with them. And, you know, that's, getting a AA+ with stable outlook is, is just an excellent outcome for us, which we were hoping for.
Thank you. And congratulations for all of us. Thanks. Are there any questions of the town manager? I provided you with a written president's report. Are there any questions? It's not time for public comment. I'm very sorry. On future agenda items, let me just mention and then also ask others if you have them. We meet on June 2nd. At that point, we will hopefully have a budget report from the Finance Committee, and they can decide whether they want to make a formal presentation. We don't adopt the budget until June 16th, or at the latest, the 30th. We do have the Water and Sewer Rate first reading and with a special public comment period. The second reading will be on June 16th. So one of the options, if the Transportation and Parking, the TSO would like to, is that they might make a presentation and have a discussion without action of, on the second, if that would be of use to the committee. I think it might be of use to the council to hear the debate among each other since we can't do that outside of a meeting. So. The other thing coming up on the 16th is intergovernmental agreements and ongoing several committees. And then also, as we mentioned earlier, is Planning Board, ZBA, and Finance Committee, non-voting members. Oh, excuse me, are there, I'm having so much trouble breathing. Whatever's going on with me is affected too many things. Are there other requests for action, our agenda items? Counselor Hanke?
I don't know whether this is necessary for a future agenda item or whether I'm jumping into counselor comments for either of my two options. But the first one is the status, I know you provided by email, a somewhat status of home rule petitions. But I, I would like that to be a regular update. It seems as if we've basically missed our opportunity to get our hearings on these home rule petitions combined with all the other hearings, because those hearings on every other town's similar home rule petitions are already scheduled. And that's quite disappointing that we dropped the ball. And I will just say that, because we passed it in February, and they're still not filed. And I think we need an agenda item in particular on committee minutes and the status of committee minutes, as well as the status of council minutes. Thank you to the CRC Chair for providing an update of where our CRC minutes are. But what did that show? It showed basically that CRC has not adopted minutes for any meeting in the last 12 months. I think there were three meetings, or two, two in the last 12 months that we've adopted minutes for. And it's not because we're not adopting them, it's because we don't have drafts. I believe Finance is in the same situation. Those are the two committees I sit on. If we haven't already violated open meeting law or public records law because of this, we've got to be on the verge of it. It's just unacceptable. We were told we would have a plan in place a couple months ago that would be presented to us on how we would get our council and our committees up to date on this. We've never seen that plan. I think it's time for conversation at the council on how it has gotten so atrocious.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn, can I weigh in on this?
Yes, Kathy.
Finance, you know, I haven't had time to talk directly with Athena or Melissa, but we came up with a process that one of us would review and do edits, and we've done that, and they're still not posted. So we've got them in SharePoint, but not in the public. So I also don't know how to move, to move them, since I can't post them other than to say, so I don't know what's breaking down, and I'll just stand there.
I will add, add an update on all of that to the next agenda on June 2nd. Are there any other questions, comments, or requests? Pam Rooney?
Thanks. This is a question for town manager, I guess. When we're talking about the budget, the budget cuts, the, the opportunity for consolidation of staff, I think one of the recommendations that I saw was to have a combined Planning Director, Director of Planning and Economic Development. And I'm, I'm concerned about that. I think it's a full-time job to do a Planning Director job. The only hope that I could see is if, if someone had a joint title, that there be staff to actually do the economic development work required. So if it's, anyway, I would love some response on that.
Sure. So we believe that a shared title, we have no title for Economic Development Director now. There's nothing. This would give a title to a person who would have that as part of their portfolio. Yes, I think Planning Director is a full-time position, but Economic Development is also a goal of the council, as you said. but economic development is also a goal of the council, as you said. So I think there's two things, reasons we're doing it. One, we think it'll, it may enhance the pool of applicants for the Planning Director if they have a broader portfolio that includes economic development. It might be more enticing to someone at a high level, working for, with a relatively high-level person to take on this position. So I think that that's a major goal for this, and also to address one of the council's goals, to develop. We don't have money for a separate person. We don't have money for additional staff. We're gonna try and attract someone who's a go-getter, who can do the planning, and the, with strong staff support under planning and then economic development as part of their portfolio.
Paul, is this a position you have to bring to the council for approval?
No, it's just a title change.
Okay.
It's not reorganization or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And is it advertised?
We're finally, it's in the job description. We just met today on it, actually.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
In seconds.
Okay, we'll move immediately to a vote. Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Counselor Lynn Griesmer, does it, aye? Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Yes.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
It's a meeting, it's a, it is unanimous. The meeting is adjourned, it's 9:22.